Welcome. I'd love to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty five. And we're going to start with a prayer. I have asked Member Wilson to provide a prayer. And then when he has finished, please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we, various before, we were grateful for the opportunity once again to meet as members of the Planning Commission, along with the members of our county community. We invite your spirit to attend us this night, but we may be able to consider the things that are on the agenda and help to render a good outcome for the citizens of the county. We're truly grateful for all we have, recognize that you've given it to us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
We're on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Member McMillan.
Second.
Second by Member King. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. We're on to Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Do any Planning Commission members have a declaration they'd like to disclose for conflict of interest of anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. And we'll move on. Uh, election of new chair and vice chair. I think that's, yep, okay, we're taking that off. Okay.
Yeah, before we get to public comment, I just want to say that the Ponderosa item we are requesting it be continued to June twelfth. On June twelfth, if you have comments, any public comment that needs to take place, it's an administrative item, so it'll have to happen during the public portion or a public comment portion of the agenda, since there will be no public hearing. But the Ponderosa, we are going to be requesting that it be continued.
Thank you, Josh. We will move into public comment. This is for administrative items. So for legislative, such as the snow storage code text amendment, that will have its own public hearing. But if you would like to give any public comment for anything else tonight for the Planning Commission, feel free to come forward. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
I know that I just spoke to one of your board members about the Ponderosa stuff, and we're not supposed to be using this time for it, but I just want to know. I mean, this is the third time that our community has come out to speak up against this, and it's been moved. And it feels as though we're being discouraged from coming here at this point, not from you guys, right? But it just feels like we're not getting the opportunity to use our comments, and people are getting discouraged and not coming. Is there a way that we can still voice our concerns to you guys tonight, even though the rest of it is not available, or are we just supposed to keep coming back?
Do you want to speak to that? Janet, you can.
You, you can definitely address it tonight. It, I don't believe that the developer or the applicant is here tonight. When it comes to the meeting minutes and it being recorded, then these will be on this, on this date, not the actual date that it's heard. I think it's probably more effective if you do come back. I can tell you that as the applicant, the developer retired just recently, like in the last, what, week, and they have a new developer who's now coming on board and, and trying to catch things up and, yeah, and there might be some more answers by, to other concerns by then as well.
I just think that as a community, we want our voices heard by you guys as to the issues with where the road is being placed, the drainage concerns, there's huge drainage concerns. The storm drain is not large enough that's there to fit twenty four lots, and the fact of how it was faultily done to begin with, right? They went in there and took all of that land out a couple of years ago when they were just to get approval by you guys. And so we just want to make sure that you guys are aware of it. I don't really care to speak to the developer. I know the developer. We all live by the developer, right? We want to make sure that you guys hear that they have done this in an incorrect way. And we want our voices heard at some point. So that's all that I wanted to say.
Dana Bauer. Any additional public comments?
My name's Robert Benel. I'm sorry for blowing up everybody's email this week. Appreciate you getting back to me, Chans. I, I'll come back in, in June, but I just wanted to make sure I commented on my, my concerns with development across the street from me. Um, I bought my lot in two thousand and seventeen, beautiful sleepy little corner of Rollins Ranch. And we sunk our life savings into a dream home there. And understand that the land's going to get developed at some point, and I always understood that, but the, the placement of the road that I saw on the plat map is kind of concerning to me. You have a, a road, a home, my neighbor's going to be cut, you know, have frontage on three sides, then another home, and then another existing road. And I always assumed that that existing road would be the ingress and egress for this development. And so I just encourage, you know, that that be considered as maybe a condition of approval. And I'm also very concerned about the drainage as a civil engineer undergrad. You know, we, I watched all, and this warm day in the spring, tons of water just flooding my neighbor Paul Clayton's house. And adding a bunch of impervious surfaces on this big old drainage that that was already flooding is very concerning to me, especially being directly across the street with deep window wells. Um, just wanted to share that. So, thank you, and thanks for standing up for us.
Seeing no additional public comments, we will move into the legislative portion of our agenda tonight. Oh, sorry, administrative. Okay, okay, yep, sorry, apologize.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair. As has been discussed, we are, as staff, requesting a continuance to June twelve. That'll give the applicant time to give us some middle items that we've requested regarding water and drainage. And we'll see adjustments in their proposals in other ways, and we're looking to that point and, and not having to renotice again, so.
Great. And any comments discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
Do you get the sense that those items will be addressed when the applicant comes back?
Uh, yes, the location of the street will definitely be one of the items addressed. The drainage, we have been requesting drainage calcs for over a year and a half. They keep giving us the same calcs. Last week, when I noticed it for tonight, or ten, ten days ago, I had given them two days to give me the information, and I had been promised that they would get it to me. They did not. And so we're pushing it again because their engineer gets, needs to get us not only drainage calcs to make sure the water flowing from the impervious surfaces can flow down downhill without providing any additional retention basins. It, it's not that it can't be mitigated anyway. If they might lose a lot in order to provide additional retention, but it's not something that, that can't be done. So we're waiting for that. There's also some water pressure calculations we're waiting for as well. So there's a few things we're waiting for. We did not get them in time to get it into the packet or for our engineer and for the fire to review. So that's why we're requesting a continuance.
Thank you.
That, do we have a motion to continue this item to the June twelfth, two thousand and twenty five meeting? Motion by Member Wilson, do we have a second? Like if I remember King, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For everyone in the audience that wants to be here to make comments, please call my office on June twelfth sometime during the day. We will know for sure whether they got us the information and if it's going to go forward on June twelfth, or if we're going to request another continuance. That way you can save yourself from coming out. Our main office number, if you want it, is eight oh one, eight four five, four zero one five.
It's also on our website. Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Now we'll head into the legislative portion meeting tonight.
About a year and a half ago, staff was directed to write snow storage ordinance because of site plans that were coming through, and there was concern that there was not enough snow storage room onsite or even offsite. So staff was directed by the County Commission to write a snow storage ordinance that would provide for design standards for commercial, residential, and industrial type zones. It's taken me that long because there really aren't any snow storage ordinances out there. So I believe I've done a pretty good job providing for the design standards, good places for the snow storage to be located, as well as places to avoid. And then there's snow storage removal options for offsite. It gives people a chance to remove it and take it somewhere else. Winter season limitations. A lot of times people, they'll shovel the snow back into the road, which is not legal. It goes against our code even now. So I've kind of tried to beef that up. If you're parking when snow trucks are coming through, the car could be damaged. Other things could be damaged, like mailboxes or, or whatever fences that you built into the right of way. So I wanted to get rid of the liability that the county may be perceived to have for allowing those things to occur. And then there's a penalty section, as well as indemnification clause, as well as a superseding clause. So that if there is another section in our code that I'm not aware of, this supersedes that, and this will take precedence. So if you have specific questions, you've had it in your packet for over a week. I can answer any questions you may have. But I'm not going to go through it line by line. I'm not going to do that.
Should we move into a public hearing before questions, or should we do questions?
No, questions first, because that gives staff and the commission a chance to discuss if there's anything that you want to discuss. If there's nothing, then yeah, go into the public hearing. But after you close the public hearing, you still have a chance to.
Discuss.
Yeah.
Josh, I'm curious. Just, I noticed the percentages, you know, that were in there. Were contextually, where, where do you even draw to, to come up with that stuff?
Those are rando numbers, and they started a lot higher. But the more I talked with the attorneys, as well as our county engineer, they were unreasonably high. And so that's why I kept them red, because that was kind of a discussion point between county engineer, county attorney, and myself. And we feel that the thirty percent, twenty five and twenty five are reasonable numbers, at least to start. In the future, if there's issues and it really isn't accounting for all the snow storage that a site needs, then we can come back and raise it.
Yeah.
But I'd rather start low than, I'd, I'd rather start low and it not be a regulatory taking than to start high and soon.
How do you police it? I'm just curious, because I read it, just, I mean.
Oh, if somebody submits a, a site plan to us, their engineer will have to account for it. There'll have to be calculations on that. Provide areas on their site, subdivisions, preliminary plats, they'll have to do the same. Show where that snow storage is going to be located. A lot of subdivisions, they have retention basins, and as it's noted in there, retention basin, as long as they put an oil-water separator in there, is a good place. So it would be, the policing would start there. But if we're noticing issues, like we're going to have in Rome, the townhomes there, I don't know if you've driven through there, there's not a lot of room. And when we had major snow two years ago, there were issues in there. So the policing, I think we'll be able to see, especially with Brett and the other Public Works guys going out and doing their that's why there's also a penalty section in there, so that we can use a hammer if we have to.
Yeah.
That was actually a question that I was going to ask exactly that same one. But the reason why I was going to ask it is what I am not understanding is why is our residential zones higher than commercial and industrial? And for the point that you just made about apartments and whatnot, I'm worried that there's already going to be difficulty in parking in some of the apartments, and now we're going to cut out potentially three in ten stalls. Do we want to look at that percentage for residential any more than, than that? And thinking about engineers and, and whatnot, looking at our code, are they going to question why would a residential zone be more than a commercial or an industrial?
Well, residential zone also includes multifamily apartments, townhomes, things like that. And with the closeness of those units and how, how large those parking lots are, it should be higher than commercial.
You mean like stalls per person or something like that, that would be in the building?
I guess I'm understanding your three in ten comment.
Well, that's thirty percent. So if we designate thirty percent of those stalls for snow storage and that's used, is that going to create an issue for parking within that facility where they're going to end up out on the street anyway?
Uh, no, because they're gonna, it's not going to take up the parking stalls. It's the way it's calculated.
Okay.
So they still have to provide a certain number of stalls per dwelling unit, which is for everything in our code, it's two parking stalls per unit. They're, they're going to have to provide an area in their development that doesn't diminish the parking, but provides for the snow storage. So it's not going to diminish parking at all.
Okay, that's really what I was trying to get at.
No, they still have the parking requirement they have to meet.
Okay.
We are ready. Can I have a motion to move into public hearing?
Motion.
Motion from Member Telford. Second from Member Wilson, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing, if you'd like to come and speak about this snow storage code text amendment. Seeing none, do I have a motion to move out of public hearing? Thank you, Member McMillan, do I have a second? Second, Member Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Out of public hearing, any more discussion on this?
I would be curious, is, is equipment a problem like cars, is that sparkiness or car parked on the road?
Um, I, I don't know if, I haven't talked to Brett, if he's seen a lot of that. I do know that there are fences that are built into the right of way. There are other issues that they have run into, and they've ended up damaging them because of the plowing. So this is to indemnify the county and place the liability on the individual that constructed that where it shouldn't have been.
That's good.
Aye, it's pulled up.
Sure, Madam Chair, I move to, we recommend approval to the County Commission of the Snow Storage Code Text Amendment based on the findings listed in the memorandum dated May eighth, two thousand and twenty five.
A motion from Member King, do we have a second? Second, Member Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimous. Onto our Planning Commission trading, open meetings.
And thanks to Janet, we have a PowerPoint, because at the meeting, I think, was there a challenge or just a lack of faith? Happy Star Wars Day this week, everyone. And I just wanted to tell Janet, I find your lack of faith disturbing. It's a great, it's a great line. All right. So the Open Meetings Act, it is in the packet. You've got a copy in there, but it is part of the Utah Code. I'll go ahead and share my screen here. If Jeremy is sharing that, you can. All right. So we've got the code reference there. Some of the things that I want to talk about today, we've got the main part of the code is the transparency side. That's why we have it, but we'll talk about meetings of public bodies, what some of the definitions are. Talk about how it's open to the public and, and why we allow comments. When we can allow comments, when we have to allow comments, and just some ideas on how to handle comments as they come. Talk about the notice that's required, and then finally the enforcement. All right, so it is called the Open Meetings Act, so it's about being open with what we're doing. And I like at the beginning of the act itself, it gives us the legislative intent. Sometimes when we're interpreting code, we try and say, well, what was the legislature intending this to be? Well, it says it right at the beginning here. It says, "The legislature finds and declares that the state, its agencies, and political subdivisions exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the legislature that the state, its agencies, and its political subdivisions take their actions openly and conduct their deliberations openly." And as I go through, if you have questions, just ask them, or, you know, I can even ask, well, what do you think it means to deliberate? What does it mean to take action? And what's the difference, right? Or is there a difference? And you, and it can be rhetorical, but if you want to jump in, you're welcome to as well.
Asking what the definition of deliberation is?
Yeah.
To me, it's just to open up an idea and talk back and forth with the parents.
Yeah, it can be sharing of information. It could be questioning, like, well, why do you feel that way about the thirty percent of the parking, or, you know, well, tell me more about that. What have you experienced? And you're really deliberating. Deliberating is like careful consideration before you're making that decision. How are you deliberating about it? Now, what it's saying is, we don't want you to be deliberating outside of the meeting, because the deliberations are in the meeting for the benefit of the public. It's for the transparency. If you had deliberated altogether prior to the meeting, and you're like, okay, we're all on the same page, and then you get here, and then it, it just looks like a rubber stamp for everything. And I'm not saying that you have to purposely make the meetings longer. I don't think that any of us want that. I saw Josh shaking his head, and so I think he agrees with me that, you know, we don't want to just extend it for the purpose of extending it, but when there are questions that maybe come up from the public, you can pose the question, and you can even say, you know what, I got some emails from the public this week. I'm, you know, I may know how a lot of you feel already, just based on prior, but let me just pose this, or hey, Josh, or Jeremy, when they're presenting, can I ask you a question that the public posed? I know that you've told me before, but the public is asking this. Let's just put it on the record so that it can be answered. I think that that can be helpful. And phrasing it that way is helpful as well. I remember specifically a meeting where one of our commissioners was asking me a question, and I'm explaining to him as a commissioner, and he's like, well, I already knew all that. I was asking for the benefit of the public. I'm like, well, I would have explained it differently had I understood that you're asking for the public. And so that helps anyone you're asking to know, well, who is this for? What's the intended audience, right? And then there's that deliberation back and forth, which is a, I think, a great, great thing to do. Now, taking action is more the formal motions that you're making. So you just made a recommendation on a legislative item, and that's going to go to the County Commission. Now, when you're taking action, if you look at the second bullet point down, it talks about not acting together outside of a meeting in a concerted and deliberate way to predetermine an action. So you don't want to count your votes, so to speak. I know that, you know, from a developer's side or a lobbyist's side, they always say, we'll never take something to the body where you haven't counted your votes. That's not us. We don't work as lobbyists, or, you know, like, we're not engaging people out of the public light, right? That's why we're transparent. And the other thing too, where if you're talking to a, a developer that has an item coming forward outside of the public meeting, they may think that you're promising to vote a certain way, and that can put you in a tricky situation as well. And so just to avoid the optics, it's great to meet all together. You've got your quorum, you've got a group where you can actually make a decision on certain items or make a recommendation on items that have to go to the commission. And so not talking outside of the meeting in a way that impacts your vote is a good thing. The other thing that's really good too is as you're deliberating here, you may hear something that flips your mind, and, and you're like, well, I came in thinking based on the packet, based on all the research I'd done, that this is what I was going to do. But one of the members brought up another point that I hadn't considered, and it flipped my vote from what I thought I was going to vote. Or maybe I, I asked questions to Josh about it, or I asked questions to Janet, and what they said and helped me understand about the law and why this is coming forward the way it is, that changed my outcome. And that's why we don't allow proxy voting, right? Because you don't know what's going to come up at the meeting that may change your mind. And, and so you wait until you have as much information as possible to make the decision. So, and all meetings are open to the public unless they're closed for a purpose that's allowed by fifty-two, four, two oh five. Fortunately, unfortunately, however you look at it, you, I, I don't think there's ever a reason that you'll go into a closed meeting. And that's probably a good thing, because closed meetings are not fun. You don't, you're not talking about fun things in closed meetings. It's usually for a not fun purpose. So as a recommending body that's not elected, you don't really have to worry about that. I did get a question maybe a year or two ago from Planning Commissioner saying, well, why, why don't we go into closed session? And I said, well, do you have a reason to? If you think of a reason, you can ask, you know, say, hey, is this appropriate for a closed session? It may be, but I think for the land use and for, as an advisory body, there's probably not a reason that you'd ever go into closed meeting. The purposes? Yeah, so the most common are probably going to be the character and professional competence, or the, the physical or mental health of an individual. There could also be pending or imminent litigation, reasonably imminent litigation. It could be about the acquisition or disposition of property where we want to do it for the benefit of the public. And if we're talking about offers and things like that, then that's a public meeting, and people can hear and go underbid us, things like that. So those are the, probably the most common. Let me look and see if I missed any big ones. Selective bargaining. I think those are probably the, the main ones that we would go to. It does talk about like deploying security for the building personnel, things that we don't want to be open, that would jeopardize the safety of people in the building. So there's, there's various things. to be open, that would jeopardize the safety of people in the building. So there's, there's various things. If you get past, uh, subsection G though, in, uh, 205, it's going to be specific to the Independent Legislative Ethics Commission, the Utah Higher Education Savings Board of Trustees, and so it's specific to other bodies, but through G are the ones that would apply to a political subdivision for the most part. And then, yeah, the little practice pointer there, if there's a question, just err on the side of transparency. There's enough, what do I call it, accusations of impropriety for the county, that even when something's legal, sometimes I'll avoid it, just to avoid the optics of what it may look like for conducting something that's legal. Small community, I think that that probably happens a lot, or there's just, um, rumors that may spread. If everything's done in the light, it's on the record, then it's harder to, um, say, oh, there's backdoor deals, or it's a good old boys' club, or some of those things that we've been accused of. All right, so meetings of the public body, what counts as a meeting? I think that that's probably a, a, an important question. So this is in the definition, definition section, and I tried to just cut out all of the words that apply to other bodies, so that this would be as close as I could. But think of it, you, you are meeting right now, so it's a gathering of a public body, we have a quorum present, right, so we need at least four for a quorum. It's convened by an individual with authority to convene the public body after following the process provided by law to do so, which we're going to get to the notice and all of that. So, after the notice goes out, and, and it has to be for the express purpose of acting as a public body. Okay, so, so if all of those things are met, then these are the purposes that you're meeting. It's to receive public comment, which you did tonight. Deliberate, which you also did tonight, or take action, and you did all of those tonight. So those are the three that are outlined in the code. So just think, anytime you're here, meeting in your capacity, you've got your name tags out front, like, this is considered a meeting, anything that's noticed. Typically, it's going to be on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. There may be times for changing that, but typically, that's what it's going to be, and those are your only meetings. You may have a work session as well. That is also a meeting. A work session counts as a meeting, and it has to be, um, public, has, um, has, the doors have to be open, has to be recorded, there have to be minutes, all of those things. Um, as far as a public body, um, here, you are an administrative body of Morgan, which is a political subdivision. You're created by ordinance, you have more than two, two or more individuals, uh, it's supported by tax revenue, and you have the authority to make decisions regarding public's business, right? Yours is specific to land use, um, because it's specific to the things that come forward to the commission eventually, and so you're not going to deal with, well, let's see, you, you wouldn't get a code change that isn't from the land use section of our code, right? We have codes outside of it, land use is the biggest, most complex. But you wouldn't deal with things, and so sometimes you'll see text amendments that go straight to the county commission, and that's why, because you don't need to recommend for non-land use items. All right, so unless the meeting's closed, which it won't ever be, that I can think of, for the planning commission, the public may attend, so anyone can come in. The public may provide comments related to the agenda or not. So there was a question today, and I, I was thinking, oh, maybe I should get up and public comment and say, stay for the training because you'll understand a little bit more about what you can and can't say. So sometimes we have public comments, and people come in, and they talk about something that's not on the agenda. That's completely allowed. Now, it may not be as relevant or persuasive or whatever, but, but it is allowed, and they can express their concerns to the body. Uh, but with public hearings specifically, which we did tonight as well, they have a right to speak. Public comment is not required under Utah law, but I think it's great that the county as a practice does that, just to allow anyone who comes to any meeting an opportunity to speak. Public hearings required by law that we must allow them to speak specifically to that item. Uh, practice pointers, don't interrupt, you know, sometimes it can get what seems like off-topic or a little heightened. Um, I would say the caveat to that would be that the chair can, um, restrict, like, if there's disorderly conduct, or, or some sort of behavior that is going beyond the scope of what is allowed under your bylaws, then you can ask them to cease and desist, or to leave, right? Do not respond, it's not a dialogue. I know we kind of did that tonight, but sometimes that's important to answer a question when, when it's asked. And, uh, just something that you may consider is say, you know, this isn't a dialogue where we can go back and forth, but because we're moving an item, we understand there's some confusion. You can speak to that item if you want, but we invite you to come back, and you can speak to it when it comes on again, or something like that, where you're, you're letting them know this isn't a dialogue, because, well, why do you think we shouldn't engage in a dialogue? Even though the law says it's not a di, you know, aside from the law saying it's not a dialogue.
Bad pretty quick.
I think so, yep. It, there's a lot of escalation that can take place, right? And, and so, um, feeding that, you know, especially if someone's angry, you don't want to feed that, and so you just take it. You listen. Generally, I try and take notes, especially if it's something where people are very passionate. I'll take notes, and then throughout the meeting, I'll try and check off those boxes to say, okay, we've addressed that, we've addressed that. And, and if I'm answering questions as you're deliberating, I'll say, well, there was a comment to that, and, and I'll try and hit it, that's what I try to do for the more, um, emotionally charged discussion points. And, oh, that's my next point, you can address comments throughout the meeting as you make your way through the agenda. Chair regulates the comments, right? So, all right, to break up this boring training, I'm going to click on this link, and hopefully.
Uh, what up, counsel, my name is Chad Kroger. This is my dog JT. Counsel, I live to be balanced and at peace.
Have you seen this? Okay, yeah, so this just. Let me see. What's that? Not coming up still? How about that? All right, I'm going to go back to extend, which I had before, maybe Jeremy, are you controlling that?
Struggling to strike your iron, it's because the ball's not supposed to be the bottom of your swing.
All right. Thanks, Jeremy.
Counsel, my name is Chad. Uh, what up, counsel, my name is Chad Kroger. This is my dog JT. Counsel, I live to be balanced and at peace, and no two things do that more for me than golfing with the boys and shooting firearms. I love both, but one of them makes my girlfriend uncomfortable. Now, if you're talking to her, it's become clear that guns are a huge issue in this country. Some people think guns themselves are the problem, other people think it's mental health. All I know is, we gotta frickin' do something. In Australia, where I did a semester and I started B-Ball, they had this gun buyback thing where if you turn your gun, you got money. Uh, money's chill, but what if in America, if you turn your gun in, you got a new set of Callaway clubs, and a tee time at the local club with three cool bros? I have mental health, every time I train a birdie in front of my dogs, it's epic. They're all peering, and, uh, a cart girl comes around the corner, just looking all cute with ice cold beverages. Daddy's been known to have more than a few Michelob Ultra's, low carb. On top of that, if you get more than one gun back, you could get some cool wedges or hybrids, and if you turn in assault rifles, you get a tee time at Augusta. I would honestly give you my rifle if you let me touch the grass on Augusta's Amen Corner, that'd be sick. Uh, I'm not saying it's a fixity issue, but, because people still do evil, but might keep our shots on the fairway.
JT?
Thank you. What up, counsel? My name is JT Parr. I'm here to buttress Chad's point and to make a macro point about America. People are dumb. But they used to be nice. Now they're dumb and mean, it's like everyone's in an episode of Succession. It's okay to be dumb, but if you're going to be dumb, you should be loving. That's how my parents raised me. And I read some poetry the other day that really drove home that idea for me, and with your permission, I'd like to wrap it to you now. What's wrong with the world, mama? People living like they ain't got no mamas. I think the whole world's addicted to the drama, only attracted to things that'll bring you trauma. Overseas, you ever trying to fight terrorism? But we still got terrorists here living. In the USA, it's a big CIA, the blood's in the KKK. Madness is what you demonstrate, and that's exactly how anger works and operates. Man, you gotta have love just to set it straight. Take control of your mind and meditate, let your soul gravitate to the love, y'all. People killing, people dying, children were here them crying. Can you practice what she preach? Or would you turn the other cheek? Father, help us, send us guidance from above, because people got me, got me questioning. Where is the love? Where is the love? Where is the love? The love, the love, the love. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and you've got to let them, right? I, I mean, if they're not causing a disturbance, they really have free rein, it's, it's free speech. And as a county, we never want to limit the free speech. Now, you know, I, anyway, I think it's, I don't know if we've ever had someone sing or rap, but we have people go off topic, and, and that's fine, and you just let them go, let them share, and, um, they had a good point, right? There, there were some good points made in there, so you just roll with the punches and take them as they come, so. Anyway. Back to the act, so let's talk a little bit about notice, and, and this was one that we kind of debated last week because there was a notice that didn't give at least 24 hours on the Utah Public Notice website, and so we canceled the meeting. And I thought it would be a little ironic and hypocritical to give an open meetings training on a night where we hadn't provided proper notice, and so that's why, that was my decision, I'm sorry, but we canceled the meeting because of that, and, uh, these are the rules that you'll find under that section of the code, and so it has to be at least 24 hours public notice, and it has to include the agenda, the date, time, place of the public meeting. Um, we also provide an annual meeting schedule for the regular meetings at least once a, a year, and we typically do that in January, either the first or second meeting. I know that there were a few changes that were made this year, where it's not always on the second and fourth, but they post that for the year. Uh, I know as a commission, sometimes we, like, when there, it falls on a voting day, because we have our meetings on Tuesdays, that we try to not have it on voting day, so we're not conflicting with other rights, you know, people voting, so. There may be reasons to amend the meetings, uh, maybe you don't have a quorum present, and so you're going to push it out if everyone's gone the same day, or, or you don't have a quorum. But typically, you'll follow that annual schedule without deviation. Now, a lot of people are getting their information digitally now, and that's why they've outlined in the code that we have to post to the Utah Public Notice website. That's the main way that we do it. We also post at the anchor location, so that's somewhere here in the building. Typically, it's multiple places, I, I think in the building that they'll post, but not everyone is stopping by the building to check the agenda, to see what, you know, what's coming up, and so that's why it has to be online. The, the code doesn't require it, but they do encourage other means of electronic notification, and so we do post it on our website as well. And it actually was posted on our website with plenty of time for the last meeting. We just missed the public notice website, which is required. Our, our website isn't required, but we do that to, to put it out. Um, I, I think, especially when there's a lot of people that come to a meeting, I'll, I'll say, hey, you can get notifications if you go to the Utah Public Notice website, and make sure you sign up for the right body, because if you just, you can't sign up for Morgan County and get all the Morgan County ones, it has to be specific to the planning commission, or the county commission, or the airport advisory board, or the library board, or whatever the body is that you want the email notifications to come to, and then when those notifications come, it will, um, outline, it'll have the agenda right in the email itself, so it is very helpful. There are some exceptions to the notice. I can only think of one time that we had an emergency meeting since I've been here in the last four years, and it was, uh, because we had, it was COVID-related, and we were having a presentation from the Weber Morgan Health Department. I don't know if he's the chair, Brian Cowan, but he's, he's over that board, the director, thank you. So he's the director, and there were some statistics that were coming out, and there was a question about, um, having an emergency order from the commission. The commission ended up not doing an emergency order, they were just hearing the information, and, um, anyway, so, so it has to be an unforeseen circumstance, uh, which was this new data that had come out, and then it, they found it necessary to consider the urgent matter. And even when that emergency comes, you still have to provide as much notice as practicable. You can't hold the meeting without first trying to reach out to the body and then getting a majority of the body saying, yes, let's have that emergency meeting. Like I said, that's the only one I've experienced. I don't know that there would ever be a time for the planning commission to have an emergency meeting, but it's just something to be aware of. And then also, topics raised by the public, they may be discussed without notice, and so if there was something that came up on in public comments that wasn't on the agenda, you could talk about it as the body, but it would be up to the presiding member, um, to use their discretion to say, you know, that brings up a good point, let's go ahead and talk about this for a few minutes, but you can't take final action on something that isn't noticed on the agenda. So it's only, it's for discussion only, not for decision if that comes up. And then lastly, enforcement. It, it talks about how certain decisions are voidable if the Open Meetings Act is not followed. So let's say that someone comes in, and they have a small subdivision, you're the land use authority, you can make the final call on that, and we didn't notice it properly. Or we, they didn't, um, set up the, the sign to notice, whatever it was that we didn't follow with the Open Meetings Act, then that decision could be challenged, right? And, and they do put a, a pretty short timeframe on it. Uh, especially with land use, I would imagine, you know, if people are going to start moving dirt or whatever, like, you want to make sure that it's handled pretty quickly. And so they would have to file that suit within 90 days of the final action to challenge that action. Um, if it involves the issuance of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, then the timeframe is reduced, and so you only have the 30 days. And then it does talk about awarding attorney's fees if someone has, um, come in and they've successfully challenged it, we did something wrong, then they can get their attorney's fees as well. And so that's why typically I'll try to err on the side of caution. I do notice I didn't put a period after that last bullet point, so that's my bad. Anyway, um, the last thing at the bottom, under section 303, it says county attorneys are tasked with enforcing the Open Meetings Act, and, um, I think it's important now, we always have Janet here, sometimes I'll step in, um, or if I'm gone at commission, Janet will step in. We're trying to be better about having both of us there, so that we can be, um, aware of what's going on and, and just be able to enforce that. I know historically, um, someone wasn't always there, or I just came when asked, and I'm really happy Janet's here, that she can step in and, and be at these meetings as well. So, with that, I hope it wasn't too painful. I think we hit the highlights, especially of what applies to the planning commission, and, um, if you have questions now, I'll take them, or you can reach out by email, phone, whatever, stop by my office. Stop by my office. So are you talking about emails with citizens? So, um, they're not part of the public body. And so it's deliberation as a body. So it's with each other more so. You can engage with the public. I would be careful in how you engage with the public, not open meetings act wise, but liability wise. Don't want you to, you know, misstate one of our codes or the law or whatever. And, and so you can always defer it to Josh, to Janet, to myself. If it's something that you're not sure on, or, or you can just say, oh yeah, come to the meeting, we'll address it there. Um, but any emails back and forth with, with the, and, and it's not even your constituents. I think that that's an important thing to understand is you're appointed by the commission. And so you don't represent the people as an elected official to the same degree that someone like me or the commission or, or any of our other elected officials are accountable to the people. You're accountable to our code and then you're appointed by the commission to give them direction and recommendations on items that come forward. Does that make sense? So, a, and I'm not saying that you shouldn't engage with the people that are reaching out to you. But they're not your constituents under our form of government. But, but I do, I, I do like the dialogue. I think that that's really important so that they feel that you are hearing what they're saying and you're putting that into your deliberation so that when you make a decision, you're, you're more well-informed about what is actually going on in the community, right? When you see something on paper, it makes a, it, it may not make as much sense as if, you know, you drove by the site or someone's describing how they'll have different frontages. Or, you know, that's what they've brought up at the last few meetings on some of the, these items that are coming forward. And it's good to understand what their concerns are.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I think also with that said, deliberations between board members by email, it's, it's a no-no as far as forum. Like that can be considered a public meeting.
Yeah, as far as predetermining, so, and I was gonna go to that, thanks Janet, cause I, I forgot actually until you said that. So if you go to 210, it's 524210. It does say, nothing in this chapter may be construed to restrict a member of a public body from transmitting an electronic message to other members of the public body at a time when the public body is not convened in a meeting. So you can send emails, but what I would discourage you from doing is predetermining um, a decision, right? Or deliberating. You, you can't predetermine, you can't deliberate. I think you can share information, cause deliberation is more about carefully considering and getting feedback and kind of, well, where are you at on this? Sharing information is completely different. If you say, hey, I received this concern, I'm just passing it along to the body. Um, hey, you know, this, this code was referenced and, and here's, you know, I don't, I don't know if you need to go and do a ton of research necessarily, but maybe you find something that's related to an item on the agenda and you're passing it along. Information is fine, emails are fine, but you can't deliberate or predetermine any action. If that makes sense? Okay. All right. Um, unless there's no more questions. Okay, I, I'm gonna pass these out. I know some of you may already have a copy. I think we gave a couple. But this would just be, we call it the Roberts Rules cheat sheet. And there's a lot of motions, there's nominations, there's things that happen in the meeting. And, um, Janet and I looked at this, we thought it would be helpful just so you're aware of, okay, how does the meeting function if I haven't done this necessarily before? Um, what, what do I need? You know, do I need a second? Some things don't need seconds, right? If you're doing a point of order, point of information, you don't need to get a second on requesting the chair, chair's permission to speak. Um, certain, like if you move the previous question because you have a motion that's been seconded and now you're discussing it, maybe you're discussing it for an hour and it's like, all right, we gotta move on. I moved the previous question, you have to get more than a majority for something like that, right? Like, is everyone ready to move on? And so hopefully that will give you a little bit of guidance and, um, maybe all of you are already pros at parliamentary procedure. I, I know that I messed up like two meetings ago. I'm like, ah, shoot, I should have brought that up. So I think we're all learning, but this can just help each other, you know, keep it straight. And if, for example, I hadn't caught something and one of you were like, oh, actually, we can't do this. You would just say, point of order, the rules require X, Y, Z. And then at that point, the chair makes a, a decision or, or whatever, and then we move on. And so anyway, hopefully that'll help. And then the other thing that I was gonna bring up is we are appeal authority. His name is Craig Call. And is it fair to say he literally wrote the book on land use for Utah? He has a great book called Ground Rules and it's just the basics about, um, land use in Utah. And we were thinking that, um, it may be good to have him come and do a training at one of the meetings or in a work session prior to the meeting, because there's certain requirements for training under our code that all the planning commissioners have to go through. Sometimes it's hard to make it to, you know, a full weekend of one of these conferences. Um, and if you're like, okay, maybe I just make a day of the conference and this can fill in the other gaps. We thought it would be good and we'll bring him in. And he'll focus more on our community and our needs and the things that, that may be impactful to us. So anyway, that's, that's on the horizon and, and hopefully we all be excited for him. Cause he's, he is really great and we're gonna try and get all of you, one of those books that you can reference as needed. So, thank you for letting me come.
The only question I have is on Ponderosa, then you're saying, waiting for a few things and that'll be in our next packet. So we'll be able to recognize those submissions that you're missing.
Yeah, so the, the submissions that I'm missing will be, uh, given to me. I will give them to our engineer and to the fire department. Um, they will be reviewed by those entities. I don't necessarily think that I will include those in the packet for you. I will address whether they've been solved or not. Typically if an engineer who has the certificate says the drainage flow works, I am not gonna challenge the engineer. The liability lies with the engineer with the certificate and stamp.
That's generally where it says, we'll comply with the understanding, they're gonna provide you the proper engineering. And that's generally what you're in that packet. When we're seeing that, it's, that they're gonna provide it that way.
That's correct. And if they are working towards a solution and it's not something that I can hold up, I will stipulate that that be done before, uh, submittal of, uh, final plat or recordation. And then that'll be up to our engineer to, to, to track. Uh, with regard to the drainage, that is one of them that could be stipulated. Uh, same with the fire pressure. Both of those can be stipulated items. Uh, the one question will be the, the road. Our code does not prohibit, uh, a road teeing in and lights going into somebody's window. There's nothing to prohibit that at all. Um, our code does have a section that says that double frontage lots shall not be allowed unless, so it's not a hard mandated no. Uh, it can, it can be done. It has been done. Uh, there's multiple examples of double and triple frontage lots, uh, in the county. So it's not something that technically can hold up an application. Um, depending on the information I get, if that's the best place for that road because of geology or, or, or storm drain or whatever, then staff may recommend approval that, that that be done. Um, but it depends on the information that I get. Uh, with regard to Ponderosa, it is an administrative item. So as long as they check all the boxes, regardless of how many people that show up and they're angry and frustrated, it can't be denied. Uh, and the only time they'll have to talk will be through, during the public comment portion of the meeting. It's not a dialogue, so we're not gonna be able to engage. If there's questions and comments that they bring up that you think are valid, write them down. During the presentation of that item, we can go through and we can try to solve, uh, answer those questions. And, um, I can't promise to resolve it according to the, the public's desires. Uh, but I can at least address some of the, the comments.
So if it is on the June 12th meeting, it doesn't necessarily mean to your point that those, like the drainage has been figured out. It just means that you've had conversations and that's a stipulation, correct?
Um, if it isn't solved, the only time, the only reason I would bring it in, it's not solved at that time, would be if our engineer says they've talked to their engineer and it will be, uh, designed and finished, uh, before, uh, final plat submittal.
Okay.
Um, and if our engineer signs off on that with a stipulation, then I will put a stipulation. Cause it's our, my engineer telling me that he's okay with that. Same with the fire department.
And would it then come back to the commission?
Nope.
Before final?
No, final plat goes directly to county commission. Doesn't come back to you at all.
Yeah, and I think that that, at least, you know, in the email exchanges that I've had, right? It's just, it's, it's an understanding, I think that it is an open debate still.
Yeah, it's not.
On those items, you know? And so just knowing how to communicate to the public in those moments, how the process works. But it's, you know, I can't be swayed because the process is what it is, you know? I mean, it's just, but it's educating in the right way. You know, I mean, I've had several people ask me and I'd say, listen, the application is the application, you know? If they're following those things, then we as a body can't necessarily change that.
That's correct. Um, if you were to recommend denial for an item that's administrative and it goes to the county commission, they use your recommendation to then deny it? And they've met all of our boxes, it opens up the county to, uh, lawsuit and liability.
Yeah.
So, um, most of the time, if a, if a planning commission recommends denial for something that really can't be denied, uh, the county commission will not follow your recommendation. So just need to remember that.
And usually because we've had discussions with them to say, hey, just so you're aware, as an administrative, or we'll even say it in the meeting, this is an administrative item. The legal recommendation in addition to the planning recommendation is that if they've checked all the boxes, you have to say yes. And I think that that's just a hard thing for, well, before I got here, I don't think I could have articulated the difference between an administrative and a legislative item for land use because I hadn't dealt with that area of the law before. And it took me a little bit to wrap my brain around it and say, oh, okay. And so when people are sending you those emails, um, and you may get them for the next four years or however long, you know, maybe 12, 20, you know, however long you're on. And I, I try and treat it as if this is the first time they've ever even experienced this and try and explain it without getting frustrated myself, cause I'm like, well, it's so easy. Well, that's because I see it all the time for the last four years. If I wasn't dealing with this all the time, then I wouldn't know either. And so I try and treat it and just use that as a chance to educate the person reaching out and just say, hey, you know, this is an administrative item, we're gonna look at to see if it complies with our code. And if it complies with the code, we have to say yes, but we understand your concern and we'll try to address it as much as we can and as, as is allowed by our code.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think any of us would be opposed to you emailing if you're cur, if, if you're concerned that you might be stating something wrong or you just want us to look over what you're gonna send. It's so much easier to avoid potentially giving someone hope or, or giving, putting the county in a place where we're liable to just check it before you send it. We prefer that.
Yeah.
On, on the front end rather than the back end.
In fact, I would recommend that if it comes down to a code interpretation question, you don't answer that at all. Uh, because the zoning administrator is the only one that has the authority to interpret the code. And then it's my interpretation that can challenge, appealed through the hearings officer. So it's, it's my job as the zoning administrator to make those interpretations. So if somebody's asking you to interpret the code or ask, then ask me for the interpretation and I can provide that to you.
Yeah.
Or just send them to me.
Yeah, I mean, that's the ideal. Have you address it.
So to protect yourselves, I would, I would highly recommend that you don't try to interpret the code for them because your interpretation may not be my interpretation. Which stands.
Yeah. Tonight, um, in this circumstance, I know that there were outstanding items that needed to be addressed with Ponderosa. But I'm just curious, I mean, if they were all, if they were checked, like the individual, you know, said, I'm retiring and someone else is coming, can they punt just because of that?
Uh, if they wanna rec, uh, request a continuance, they have absolutely the right to request a continuance. And I would recommend, highly recommend that you never deny that. Because just like other people have the right to get up and speak during the public comment portion, they have a right to request that to bring additional information and to address additional concerns. With that said, if my engineer, Mark Miller, had said to me, I'm okay stipulating that the drainage is handled before they submit for final plat, then I'm gonna stipulate it and I'm gonna recommend approval for it. Even though there's still some outstanding items, because nothing that's outstanding would hold it up from them meeting our code. They could lose a lot to put in retention if they need to, but they can still meet our code. Right? It, it's the same with the fire pressure. You can put in pumps. Pumps will increase the pressure for the upper, upper lots that might not have the required pressure. In my discussion with fire, they were okay with that. But I'd rather they be okay with the calculations before I bring it forward. But if they tell me I'm okay with that, stipulate it, it needs to be done before they file for a final plat, then I will put those in as stipulations and I will recommend approval. It's the same with the road. If they wanna go forward with the road where they're proposing it, that's up to them. You can recommend denial. It can go to the county commission. The county commission may say, we're gonna approve your subdivision, except for the location of the road. It has to be where it was previously shown and adopted. Right? So it's not something that technically should hold them up from moving from your body to that body. If you have a problem with where the road is located, then you can say, we're gonna recommend approval for everything in the subdivision except for the road. The road needs to be redesigned back where it was supposed to go. And then I would take that to the county commission. That would be a recommendation from you.
Thank you.
And one of the things that I know I've heard comments from people, when, you know, we're at an administrative item, particularly for subdivision, it's like, well, when were we supposed to speak up? And I think it's important to realize that a lot of these subdivisions are based off of development agreements that were entered into like 20 years ago. And have had numerous amendments since in between. And so that's the time that you should have been speaking up and a lot of people don't know that. And again, you guys weren't here when those were entered into and.
Yeah, I mean, you start reading the minutes from 2007, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and you're going, okay.
Yeah.
Well, to add to that, a lot of the development agreements required certain steps like traffic impact studies or some required geo hazard, um, studies upfront. And because those were already handled at the time of the development agreement, I'm not gonna require them to go through and submit a whole new one now because they've already met that during the development agreement process. Uh, Rollins Ranch is a good example for that. I'm sure that I'm fairly certain they had a traffic impact study during the development agreements to justify those number of lots. So I'm not gonna require a new one now. For phase, what is this, phase six or seven?
It's seven, it's seven A's, seven B, eight A, eight B, but it's really now one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four of the final phases in Rollins Ranch, but it's really seven A. And then there's seven B, eight A, eight B. All those phases were justified in the development agreement through whatever was required to be submitted at that time.
Which is why it's important when you have a legislative item come before you that, that you're thinking, oh, how does this impact our, um, antecedent, no, let's see what, predus progeny? I don't know. Like the people that come after us 20 years down the road, right? Cause, cause we do bind, we bind hands a little bit with the decisions that are made legislatively, you know, years down the road too. So I think, um, as a county, we, we live and learn. And sometimes we say that we've inherited problems from our predecessors. At the same time, we're creating problems for those that come after us. You know, that's just human nature, we can't get it right. right every time. But I think if we understand what our code is, we understand the feel for the community, you know, all those things, the more we understand what we can and can't do, the better equipped we are when an application comes forward to put in any conditions that we legally can, um, and negotiate in a way that allows the applicant to exercise their rights, but also preserves, you know, the rights of, of neighbors, or, or whatever it may be, you know, how it impacts the community.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, it's helpful.
Judy, I have a question. On here, it says approval of the April 10th minutes, but on my packet that you sent us, it's April 24th.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 24th, 2025 planning commission meeting?
Well, actually, the April 24th, we didn't have.
So it is April 10th. Okay, okay. I have a motion to approve the planning commission meetings from the April 10th, 2025 minutes.
Motion.
Motion, Member King. Second, Member Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimous. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Member Wilson, second?
Second.
Member King, all in favor?
Aye.